on this thing anymore or what? No. The system. Why are there people? Oh, my goodness.
You're 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 on.
All right, Phil, we're good whenever you're good.
I want to know if there's a raised hand for the people to raise their hands on these on this thing.
And their reactions on the bottom, there's a raised hand button.
All right, I don't have a raised hand button, so I'm wondering if everybody else does.
It depends on.
Karen is demonstrating his right now, Phil.
Well, I see one person that I can call on.
Two people. Someone else raised a hand.
All right, well, I guess they are finding it. So I mean, I don't have it. I don't know if everyone else has it. Andrew, I have thumbs up, you know, you know.
Yeah.
All right, well, let's move on.
We can use that as a raised hand if they can't raise hands.
Gotcha. All right, let's call the order. Welcome everyone to the meeting for the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors. February 10th, 2021 via Zoom. As we do, first we'll have a moment of silence. And during that moment of silence, we just ask that you remember all those who have been affected by this horrible virus and their families. And those on the front lines, the doctors, nurses, the EMTs, the police, fire. All those who answer their call to duty unselfishly. And those everyday important essential workers, the garbage collectors, supermarket workers, food servers, and that's just to name a few. And here in our township, our management and our administrative staff, the Public Works Department. Together, they keep our township running. Let us support our local businesses the best we can. And please don't forget to be generous to those who are serving you. Most of all, let's treat people with kindness, respect. And together, as a community, we will be stronger when this is finally all over. If you just bow your your heads for a moment. You recite the pledge allegiance with the board? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Lewis, any additions? To the agenda tonight or changes to the agenda tonight?
Mr. Chairman, one one change, the Public Works Report, which is under item 11C2, will be moved up under number five.
Okay, great. No special actions tonight, so I guess this is this is the move up here. Public Works Report.
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Chivoni, you're you're up.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. This is the Public Works Report for the month of January 2021. We continue to perform preventative and corrective maintenance to all township owned vehicles. And equipment on a daily basis. The Park and Recs Department programs have restarted in the Township Administrative Building. Public Works assists with the setups of daily basis for those programs. We do weekly park inspections. They continue to be done along with trash removal in all the parks as well as weekly trash removal. Along Sycamore Street. We had a total of 34 street light issues that were reported. We responded to 74 one call mark out requests at Township owned utilities. Potholes were filled on nine different township roads. Crack sealing was done on five different township roads. We responded to three requests for assistance from Newtown Township Police Department. We installed 13 surface mounted manhole rings on eight different township roads. We've also temporarily patched 120 lineal feet of curb. On Everett Drive in the Country Bend Development. And then we also had two separate winter related issues to deal with. The first event was a minor one on Tuesday, January 26th in the early morning hours. Due to freezing rain, we brought a crew into salt the main roads on the north side of the township. During this winter event, there were no issues mechanical or otherwise that occurred. Second event, Winter Storm Morlina, that started on Sunday, January 31st at approximately 11:00 a.m. And ended on Tuesday, February 2nd. At approximately 1:00 p.m. with minor flurries and snow drifting. That continued throughout the day into the evening. During the storm, we encountered multiple minor equipment problems. These issues were mainly broken hydraulic lines, which were easily repaired. Although on Monday, February 1st at 4:30 during the storm, we had one truck that had to be taken out of service for the remainder of the snow event. Truck taken out of service was our 1997 International Six Wheel Dump, which had radiator and fuel line issues that couldn't be repaired during the event. That truck is still currently out of service and it's not available for this upcoming snow. That concludes my report for tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Chivoni?
I had a question. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thanks for attending the meeting. Look forward to seeing you here as often as you can make it. I wanted you to know that I really like your weekly reports that offer a lot of details of which streets were paved or repaired. It's good for the residents to know that. For example, you mentioned Country Bend, that's where I live. I didn't know. You made repairs in our neighborhood. Thank you very much. I had a question. You mentioned one call mark out requests. I don't know what that is.
Ever anybody digs within Newtown, in Newtown Township in the state of Pennsylvania, they have to make a one call request to PA One Call Systems. They generate a ticket, which goes out to all utility owners, us being one of them. Once we receive that ticket, we'll go out and either mark out where our utilities are for the contractor who's going to excavate. Or if there's no utilities, we report back that the area is clear. Our utilities consist of water or stormwater. Electric for streetlights and traffic signal loops. Which we have very few because most of our traffic signals operate off of a camera system. We get those constantly. So anybody that digs in Pennsylvania is supposed to call the 811 number and report it.
Okay, I get it. Thank you. The other question I had, I've been trying to understand how, I know we're going to have a report on advertising for the liquid fuels program to repave certain roads in Newtown. The engineer is going to request that a little while, but I was wondering how those. I've been wondering how those roads are selected and in particular. I was wondering, I know there's about 71.3 miles of roads in Newtown, Pennsylvania, the Newtown Township that we're responsible for. Is there a database of these roads that indicate? You know, that includes some information about the repairing, repaving history?
We don't have a database. I do have a file that I keep on the roads. As you know, Newtown has an abundance of roads that need to be repaved. Every year on a daily basis, well, every year, once our once our road programs decide it, which roads we're going to do that year. We start working on the following year. The year, the roads are reviewed once a year and we pick the program out of that as the which roads we're going to pave the following year. So there's really no database I could send you to that you could look at. I could put a package together so you can see what I have on file. That would probably be the best way to go about it.
I don't know. I was just curious as if there was any. I don't know, scientific method with numbers or.
I mean, I do, I do. Yeah, I do rate them every year. They get, like I said, they get reviewed again every year because certain roads deteriorate faster than others. So I don't have a specific set picked out for next following year. It gets reviewed in the springtime for the following year. And like I said, certain roads deteriorate faster than others. Try to put the package together and makes the most sense each year.
I suppose you might get some feedback from residents who might be complaining, for example, certain roads that have a lot of patches and might need repair.
Sure, we get we get complaints and requests. I do. I do have a lot of contacts with different HOAs. And when they call for a request, I try to give them the best idea as far as what I think a timeframe is to get to those roads. And they're encouraged to touch base with me in the springtime. So we can review them together and they can update the residents accordingly.
So the best way is for the HOA to contact you?
The HOA or the resident can contact me. I'm more than happy to discuss roads with anybody that wants to talk about it.
The last thing I had, I think I mentioned it once before, you have some new equipment to make better patches on roads. Have you been able to use that, I guess, to make sure the patches last longer, I suppose?
You just start utilizing that piece of equipment. With COVID, the red last year, we haven't really had the time to use it. Hopefully, we'll be able to get summer help this year. And we'll be able to start getting into it a little bit more. To do the patches, it takes at least a crew, about four or five guys. Right now, our department's eight eight men strong. Two guys are typically, you know, one to two guys are typically in the garage full time working on equipment. And so if the others are out cutting grass, I do not have anybody to work on the roads. Hopefully, like I said, once, once COVID gets broken up. And we can bring in summer help, we'll be able to get to that.
Maybe I can get my son to apply for a job in the summer.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, thank you very much.
You got it.
The other questions?
To thank the Public Works Department. There's a long list of things. It's just like two months worth of work here, maybe. But I think as in terms of people, how many people, how many crews you have, how many staff you have. So thanks for this report.
You're welcome.
I just have one question in regards to the road program. Mr. Mack had mentioned. And you had mentioned something about the homeowners associations calling in, probably giving you some feedback on what their roads are like. Let me, when they do call in, you do go there and verify that these roads are in bad enough shape that they go on to the road program. And the reason I'm asking that is because you can be over inundated with a group of people calling from one particular HOA place, HOA organization, because they think that, you know, possibly by so many people calling you, they'll get something done. But if that's the case, do you go out there and just verify that these roads are in bad enough condition that they should be put on the road program at that particular time?
Yeah, they're they're all verified and you do have that where you get an abundance of a neighborhood. So to speak, gang up on you, try to try to influence your decision a little bit, which is understandable. Everybody wants a new road in front of their house. But yeah, we go out and verify it, review it. If it makes the cut, it makes the cut. If it doesn't, it doesn't. And to try to be upfront, not everybody likes to hear that. But you try to be upfront as you can with everybody to make them aware of their situation and what's going on in the township.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Chivoni? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you for, thank you for all you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And your and your and your team as well. I met one of the gentlemen while shoveling my driveway. Said he's working like almost 22 hours or something like that, you know, just trying to clear the snow. So appreciate all the hard work and effort that your team puts forth. Just to try and clear those roads and keep them, you know, so that we're safe to drive on them. So thank you for that.
Welcome. Kind words.
Can I just ask you a question? Are they supposed to be digging out individual driveways?
No, we don't dig out the individual driveways.
I just want to make sure.
I did didn't dig out my driveway. I
We probably.
Dig out my own driveway.
All right, we probably plow them back in, but we don't take them out.
A little bit, yeah, but it's okay. Sorry, thank you.
I got some compliments from the from the last storm, so. So the neighbors are appreciative.
All right, somebody, John DiApril, you have your hand up. I guess this isn't a question and answer, but go ahead. Since there was a snowstorm and you have a question, go right ahead.
Okay, could you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Joe Pizon, you didn't fix my light on the corner yet. Not only that, you did a good job cleaning the streets to the snow. But when you push it up on the corners, you push it up on the sidewalks. Now, the township and the homeowners association want the sidewalks clean. Now, if we got four feet, eight feet of snow on the corner where the sidewalk's at, we can't do that. A regular resident cannot do that. So, you know, either you're going to have to give us leeway with cleaning the sidewalk or come back and get the snow off the corner. Okay, that's it.
All right, thank you, John. Is this going to be a lot of questions for the Public Works Department? I see other hands that are up, Ms. Dempsey?
Yes, I just have a comment too about the snow removal, great snow removal on the. Is this, I'm on video, can you see me?
No, we can hear you. I can't can't see you.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I I have the same comment as John. The corners of the streets are, they're so high that when you pull out of the street. It's like you're scared to death to even make a turn because you can't see. So I really feel that the corners are unsafe. And I'm in Newtown Crossing and on most of the streets, you can plow down the street, plant all that down the street into the circles. Where it wouldn't be such a hazard.
Joe, you want to explain the procedure or you're on mute, so.
The last, the last two stores we had dumped 17 inches of snow combined on us. The last one being a wet snow. Pushing it isn't that easy. We try to accommodate where handicap ramps are when we have smaller snows. Try to work the one side or the other to eliminate the burden of people having to shovel out the handicap ramps. It doesn't always go where you want, especially once we get to those amounts. It's it's hard to work it and sometimes it's got to go to the corners. Which unfortunately, that's where everybody's problems are. That's best I can say about it. We could work it down to the end of the road. I can talk with our contractor about that. You're in Newtown Crossing. We do have a contractor that handles that development. So I can talk to him, make every combination he can, he can physically do, but I can't promise anything.
Any further comments or questions from Mr. Chivoni before he leaves? Okay. Seeing none, but thank you, Joe. Appreciate you being here. If you want to hang out, you can hang out. If if not, you're you're dismissed, so to speak. Thanks, Joe. Moving on, we're into our first session of public comment. Public can make a comment on anything that is not on the agenda. And if you you have a comment, I guess, raise your hand. And I will call on you. I see right now, Mr. McCarron, you're first up.
Hi, thanks. Can you can hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. I wanted to follow up again about diversity. I really had no intention of, but I've been talking to my friends who live here in Newtown Township about it. And one of them shared a story with me and I thought it was worthwhile sharing with you. So my friend who lives here in Newtown Township, he's retired. He had a successful career in business. And lately, given COVID, he's been doing a lot of his shopping online. But he also thought it important to show his support for local businesses by shopping local. So back in December, he decided to go holiday shopping here in Newtown. And he came upon a store that had some nice things in the window. The store was open. And he decided to go in. And the salesperson greeted him at the door. But the salesperson did not say the typical typical greetings like welcome or how are you today? Instead, the salesperson said to my friend, deliveries are in the rear. Now, my friend said it to me, he was nicely dressed. He had on a nice winter coat and his trademark fedora hat. But the salesperson did not seem to take notice of these visual visual cues. Instead, the salesperson took notice from the cue that has nothing to do with how he was dressed, namely the color of his skin. For my friend happens to be black. And from that cue, and that cue only, came the greeting, deliveries are in the rear. Now, he said, the salesperson said this in a very matter of fact manner. It wasn't tinged with racial animosity. But clearly, it was an unconscious bias. And however unwittingly, my friend felt he had been profiled. White faced men customer and black faced men delivery person. So for all that my friend has achieved in life and business, you know, his education, income, occupation. That was not enough to protect him from that gut punch reminder that we have a social hierarchy in this country determined at birth as based on your color of skin. So it's nice to say that skin color doesn't matter, but it does matter. And as the local government, we should be doing something about it. Now, I was, last time I talked, we talked about diversity and police hiring, because that's where we're doing hiring right now. And Chief Hurd made a valid point. He said that when someone calls for police, they need help. They don't care about the color of the skin of the officer responding. The point being that once the residents see the police are uniformed, they will feel safe. And I agree with that. That's true. But at the same time, we are filling the trappings of that uniform with only a white face, which you might expect given our demographics. But that's as consistent a visual cue as what the salesperson saw when my friend walked in the door. While we hope that residents would only respond to the trappings of the police uniform. You know, the question comes up, are unwittingly, are we as a township presenting to our residents, just like the salesperson that along with the visual cue of how you're dressed in the police uniform, we're a customer, here's a cue of a white skin color. You know, in case police, white face means safety and person of color may mean something else. So I I think it's something that we really should, not just for the benefit of the police department. But for the benefit of our residents, that we that we hire officers of color. And I know I suggested last time that all three hires in 2021 should be officers of color. I think last year, when I heard there was a police lieutenant, I didn't realize someone was being promoted. I thought we were hiring one. I suggested actually hiring a police lieutenant of color. Now, I, there was a comment that maybe it'd be unfair to, you know, if we hired all three to candidates who are white. You know, but in my mind, I don't think you get the diversity that you're achieving with one or two. And if I understand correctly, we hired a replacement officer in October. So I guess if that was an officer of color, great. If it wasn't, then I think we checked the box in fairness to white candidates. And I I just like to see us address this unconscious bias by changing the profile that we as a town should present to our residents by diversifying our workforce. And my friend shared this story with me. I cringed when I heard it. You know, and he said, look, I I put up with this in my career and what going through it. I just wasn't expecting in my retirement, in my own community, to get hit with this. So I thought I'd pass it on to you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. John DiApril?
Hello.
Yes, sir.
I take offense to what Mr. McCarron just brought up. Most of us in Newtown don't see color. So if he's bringing up black white stuff, he's a troublemaker. Far as diversity, diversity, hey. First of all, you know, I know from his previous things on supervisors meetings, he's new in Newtown. Johnny Mack doesn't know because 20 years he was asleep in here. He didn't know. We had African American police officers in Newtown many years ago. Matter of fact, one another thing I wanted to bring up was when he retired. He volunteered for the township. He was working with the police in volunteer status. He's the, he's the man that got what's his name, Sanders, Sanderlin, Sanderlin was chairman of the board way back then. He's the guy that got Sanderlin to make Martin Luther King Day a holiday in Newtown. It wasn't before that. So, you know, for all you people that that were never awake or just moved to Newtown, we had diversity in Newtown. Being being a person who was reverse discriminated against, worked for the government, the worst thing to be in the government is a white male. Because everybody else is ahead of you. They they give them extra points for promotions and stuff. Well, you know, I I am a guy that was reverse discriminated against for supervisor's job. They made, in fact, the guy was a friend of mine. But to rub even more salt in the wounds, they made him my boss. How do I know this? Because the general foreman that was in on the meeting told me. They wouldn't stick up for me. They wouldn't you know, go to bat bat for me if I wanted to bring up a grievance. So there it is. I mean, I'm not holding that against. But they should hire the best man qualified for the job. Even if he was green or purple, the best man hired for the job. Doesn't matter what color you are. Like I said, most people in Newtown don't see color. If you treat me nice, I'm going to treat you nice. I treat everyone nice unless you know, they they give me a hard time. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. Anyone else have a public comment? Seeing none, moving right along. No minor approvals. We don't have a public hearing. Reports of committees, boards and commissions. No committee reports tonight that I see of. We'll go into board members' comments. I just have one comment that last year, I know that the board had voted to raise taxes, I believe in additional four mills. Onto our existing tax tax base. And it's just funny that today I read an article that the school school board is raising taxes 3% and has a deficit of $10 million. Now, that 3% in taxed increase equates to 3.789 in mil, so almost four mils of equivalent to what we raised. Now, I'm just curious to see where any outrage would be. Because when we tried to do it and did it with over probably 30 years of not having a tax increase. And the school board does it every year. I never see any outrage and I don't know, when you need a cop, you don't call the school board. When you need a fireman, you don't call the school board. When you need to roads plowed, you don't call the school board. But again, nobody says anything when the school board raises taxes. Now, I'm not saying to go there with the pitchforks and such. But I'm just saying there's a situation here where we raise taxes so that we can maintain services for our residents, being safety with police, fire. And also with the roads program or administration that takes care of daily daily situations. But in the situation of school board, it just seems that they raise taxes every year as opposed to not once every 30 years and get away with it. Now, this is just my public comment. Because I just think there's some sort of unfairness here. And the people of the township and mostly maybe the people that live in the 55 and plus communities that don't have children in the school district and are getting taxed all the time by the school district. Should realize that we here as Board of Supervisors and as a township. When we raise taxes, we're doing it because we want to maintain the services and the quality of our township. So I I just think, I just want to make people aware of that because sometimes it falls on deaf ears. But in this case, I think we should take into consideration what you're getting for and what you're not getting for. And that's, that's my public, I guess, public statement for. And that's a that's my public, I guess, public statement for the night.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something or say?
Well, I hope you're not questioning me, John, because this is not a question.
I'm not questioning you.
Now, this this will be your statement.
I'm not questioning anybody. I want to say something as the liaison to the Council Rock School District Board. I mean, I talked about this. The last report I made when I asked them specifically about their budget, they weren't ready to tell me at that time. Now, since then, they had their board meeting and I haven't been able to arrange another meeting with them to get their feedback, their details about the proposed budget. So I'm looking forward to doing that as soon as possible. And if you have any questions for me that you would like me to ask the representatives of the school board. Please let me know.
As a matter of fact, I do. I think what you can suggest to the school board is that they have a lot of facilities there that can be used by the residents of this township. Which could be the swimming pool, the the weight rooms and so on. That, in my opinion, since the taxpayers are paying the taxes to, you know, basically have the school board survive or school system survive and maybe chop down some of that $10 million deficit. That they could offer to the people of this township at certain times, you know, I'm not suggesting 24 hours a day. But maybe they should consider offering some of their facilities as a use to the people of this township. Proof can be their driver's license or something like that. And maybe they issue some sort of a membership card. But I think that they should start, this again, my opinion, but I think maybe if you were to bring this to the the school board and ask them. Then maybe they should start in a way to give back to the people of this township. And using their facilities, I know that up in Lebanon, Pennsylvania, the college that's there, Lebanon Valley College, built a big facility. Which is a weight room. It's it's everything. It's it's almost as the size of the NAC. And if you're a resident of that area, you get to use it for free. And I think that's something that maybe the school board should consider instead of, you know, taxing the people of this township. And I understand that, hey, my my kids went through the school system. So I'm not knocking the school system per se. I'm knocking that they should be giving back something to the township and the residents. And maybe that's a little bit bit of the services that they can give in regards to helping the people of this township that may not have a lot of funds available to join some sort of health club, but can get the same services out of the school school district.
Could I ask Mr. Lewis a question? I know you reported a while ago that the school offered some facilities for our summer camp. Is that offer for free or do they charge the township for that?
No, I believe there's a charge for that.
Okay. I could ask you offline what that charge is. Okay, later. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher.
Well, briefly, the finance committee switched switched their meeting this month. So usually it's the second Tuesday, which would have been last night. We postponed it till February 23rd. Tuesday, February 23rd, just so everyone's aware of that. And I can't, I can't. To be true to myself, I cannot let it it go. And Mr. Diabro is is a great, great guy. But I I do have to say that i- if there's initiative, an initiative that stresses diversity, I'm all for it. And I wake up every morning and consider the the implicit bias, if you want to say it, that Mr. McCarron is talking to. And and I I, you know, meditate on that just about every day. So I I just I just needed to make sure that if one one opinion is expressed, I needed to put mine out there too.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fisher. Mr. Mack.
Yes, I have a few things. So one is the joint zoning council meeting I attended on February 4th. The note, the footnote to the something to do with an ordinance to curtail the inappropriate use of short term rentals that Mr. Shankman prepared. Was adopted and voted on. I forget exactly what that footnote was, but Jerry, you would know you wrote it. So just to let you know that. We still haven't gotten any feedback from the other joint chair members regarding the environmental advisory council's recommendations for including certain things in the comprehensive plan. I'm trying to push them on that. We are going to do an audit. The Newtown auditors, elected auditors are gonna help do the audit for the joint chair. Mr. Warren Kaiser and Mr. Dick Weaver volunteered to do that and we'll be doing that on Saturday. So that's my report from the Joint Zoning Council. From the Environmental Advisory Council, I think we discussed previously, they want to do a webinar. By the Bucks County Autobots Society entitled 389 Bird Species On The brink Survival By Degrees. That is tentatively scheduled, I think, for a special EAC meeting on Saturday, March 6, 2021 at 10 a.m. The Newtown Human Relations Commission on February 17th will be having as a guest speaker Karen Downer, who's the president of the Bucks County NAACP. Who will speak about her organization's approach to working with local police departments in Bucks County. As some background, I would just mention that as reported in the Courier Times in September last year. The Bensalem Police and NAACP Bucks County teamed up to increase training, recruit residents of color and increase transparency. So I guess that's going to be part of her discussion at the February 17th Human Relations Commission Zoom meeting. The last item is BACADO, which is the Bucks County Association of Township Officials. I think all the supervisors here are members and I'll be attending the virtual annual convention of that organization on Saturday, February 20, 2021. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
John, in regards to, you mentioned something about audit.
Yes.
Do do you know, do they actually audit? Or are they just signing off on paperwork?
Well.
I'm serious.
No, Mr. Kaiser asked me to bring in all the books, the check register, the bank statements. They're gonna check if I have the right credentials to be signing checks, et cetera, that sort of thing. We don't have, the joint chair doesn't have, you know, like expenses like meals with clients and stuff like that. So there's none of that. You know, shady kind of expenses. So everything has been is done by invoices. So it should be a pretty simple and straightforward audit. I'm not quite sure who is going to get that audit or what they're gonna do with it. But that will be discussed at the next joint chair meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First thing, I think it's your birthday tomorrow. Happy birthday.
Well, thank you. 39 again.
That's right. Keep it rolling. All right, I have the Park and Rec Parks and Recreation Report. Upcoming programs at Parks and Recreation, we have Saturday Morning Art Series. There's a virtual exercise classes. I don't know if you're virtually there or virtually exercising, but learn to draw and sketch for kids and adults, action karate and bricks for kids, wheels in motion. And again, pre-registration is required for all these programs and you can get to them at newtownfund.com. I've got a mini report for the business liaison project that we've been working on with communications with businesses in the township. And the board of supervisors. I met with Eric Scott Gold to try and form up a plan on what that would look like and what we could do to improve those communications. And actually, I met with a a couple of businesses this week. Actually, the feedback was pretty good. There were no complaints, which was good to hear. So that was good. And like I said, we're still working this out, but I wanted to. We're not improving communication if I don't give you guys a report. So if you gotta give me what I had. Also, for community service liaison. There is still a food collection continues for the Wrightstown Food Cupboard by Newtown Rotary Club and the Temperance House. And you can drop off at the Temperance House. They have boxes inside there. Also, the Newtown Rotary Club along with a Newtown Next Gen Club and Council Rock Interact will be collecting blankets, towels and socks for Lower Bucks County Homeless Shelter. Apparently, it's an item that they need a lot down there because obviously some things that people need, they get them and they take them with them. And, you know, it's not, it's not a bottomless supply, so they need to keep replenishing it. So I don't have the dates for that yet. We're working on collection points in Newtown. Hopefully I'll have that sorted by the next, our next meeting. And also you can go to the Newtown Rotary Facebook page or website to get updates on that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. You mentioned the Temperance House. I I want to say I believe that they were named Business of the Year. Is that that correct by the, is what the Newtown Business Association? I like to congratulate them on that.
Yeah, and they and they've done a lot over COVID early on with the food drive. It was around Easter time. They, I think somebody was dressed as Easter bunny doing it at the Temperance House. So they'd be doing it pretty much all last year and and there's still a need. So we started doing it again. So.
Excellent.
I know they worked with with me and another group that provided meals for first responders. That was great. It was great to work.
Congratulations to that. Mr. Oxley.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Hey, happy birthday early. That's a, that's awesome, man. Hopefully you do something fun.
I have one every year.
There you go. So it's Black History Month. Wanted to just share with everyone that it's a celebration that goes on specifically this month, but we like to make sure that we celebrate Black History all the time. There's been lots of achievements and contributions that African Americans have provided this country over a period of time. And with the civil unrest that happened last year and the the Black Lives Matter movement that was something that propelled based upon, you know, George Floyd's murder and other unfortunate incidents that pertain to African Americans. Wanted to make it clear that just because, you know, there was an awful awful moment in history of slavery and so forth. There is a great history of African American people before they came to America and chains and after they got out of slavery. Where, you know, you have people that found ways to make it work when society would not allow them to succeed. You know, and with this movement that happened, you were aware of things that some people didn't even know before. So you, I mean, you talk about Juneteenth. No one knew what, some people didn't know what Juneteenth meant. No, some people didn't know about Black Wall Street, which was a real huge economic influx for African American community in Tulsa, Oklahoma. So, you know, when you think about people like me, think about Martin Luther King and Malcolm X. You know, Rosa Parks, the Civil Rights Movement. You know, sometimes people think about Barack Obama. And also, you know, the first African American lady to be Vice President. It's a it's a true history. It's rich. And I think a lot of people are starting to be a little more aware of it. So just because February is Black History Month, doesn't stop anyone from celebrating what Black History is, which is just people just trying to live in America, just like everyone else and succeed. So I encourage everyone to continue to reach out, learn a little bit more about your neighbors. Diversity is very important. You know, I'm first African American supervisor in Newtown. That's a huge milestone. So that's Black History in itself. And I appreciate all of all of you gentlemen providing me the opportunity to serve with you for our community. And I appreciate the opportunity to sit with all of you and discuss issues that are relevant to our township. I I'm a big fan of having a conversation. I think you all know that. And I'm a big fan of moving forward in a way where we can all live in a place where obviously utopia doesn't exist, but in a place where people understand each other a little bit better. You know, there's people that might feel that, I heard Mr. Diabro's comments. I I I can, I can understand if he felt that way. There are moments where I feel though I have been profiled. Obviously, I can share those with you, but I'm not going to get into that here. But I also feel as as Mr. Karen said. You have moments where you walk into places and people have this unconscious bias. It's normal, unfortunately, and that's the part that we need to overcome. So this being Black History Month, let's make sure that we're all kind of focusing on working towards a better Newtown. You know, I I understand Mr. McCarron's comments about diversity on the police force. And Chief Hurd and I have talked about that and, you know, he's open to the conversation. So we're we're, we are making inroads and we're we're trying to get there, but we want to make sure that we're safe here. And everyone is going to be put to the same test regardless of what their color is or what their gender is. And or what their religion is, and that's fine. And I, we can live with that. I can live with that. If he makes the right, if he makes, he makes the best choice based upon what he feels is the best person for the force. But, you know, this is a great time and I think that all the different conversations we've had. I think that we can continue to build on that. And this is a great month. So happy Black History Month, everyone. Because, you know, it's history and it's just something that we should all enjoy. From the EDC, I sent over a memo to the board suggestions or recommendations from the committee in regards to zoning. Rezoning of the business commons, ways to make it a little more business friendly. From what we've heard over the past from existing businesses that are there, trying to make it a little more new business friendly. And I I didn't know if any of you gentlemen were able to review it or take a look at it, but I was hoping that maybe we could at least discuss it a little bit so that maybe we can move forward in sending it over to the planning commission. I know that Jerry, Mr. Shankman is taking a look at it. Mr. Fiddler has it as well. And I'd like to see if there's an opportunity that maybe we could discuss a little bit and talk about an opportunity to move it forward so that we can get the ball rolling in this regard because the business commons is a great place. We all know that it needs a little bit of revitalization so that we can provide an opportunity to get some really good, unique businesses in there that can provide a lot more earning contacts for the township.
Mr. Oxley.
Thank you, Mr. Oxley. Yes, Dennis.
Thank you.
The the documents that you just mentioned, could you resend them? Because I was reading, when I was reviewing the minutes for this evening's approval, I I saw that you had, were going to send them out and I looked for them and I couldn't find them. So you can resend them. That would be great.
Yes, no problem. I can do that. So you didn't get a chance to review it then?
Why don't you resend them to the whole board and did you send copies to our planner and our engineer for them to look it over also, our solicitor? I think they should be on board with this and
I know.
We discussed this issue possibly our next work session. Mr. Lewis, is the township closed on Monday? Mr. Lewis, is the township closed on Monday, President's Day or?
Yeah, President's Day is a holiday on Monday.
Okay, maybe we can schedule, I mean, since we do everything via Zoom, I don't think it would be a problem having a work session maybe on Tuesday. And we, we could hash that out after the meeting, but maybe if everyone's available on Tuesday, and I'll give us a chance to discuss this, maybe give everybody else a chance to read everything over. Does that sound agreeable to the board, if that's possible?
I like that idea.
Okay. Dennis Kyle, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good, Mr. Fisher.
For sure.
Okay.
Well, I, I'm, I'm all for the, a work session. I just was hoping to see if there, you know, we could, well, will, will, will our, will our planner and our engineer and our solicitor be a part of the work session as well?
Well, we, well, our engineer will hopefully be there. Leanna never, never likes to miss a meeting. I know that. We just have to contact Ms. Fountain and I'm sure that there will be no problem having her there. But, you know, she should review it also being the planner. So that will be.
All right. So what I'll do is I will send it to, to her and Leanna?
Or you can send it to Mike and Micah could distribute it to everybody. Okay.
All right. Well, thank you.
And well said on Black History Month.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Let's see, moving right along, we have no land development tonight. Reports of officials, engineers report. Leanna?
Thank you. Tonight, we have the organization to advertise the 2021 Liquid Fuels Road Program. Joe touched on this a little bit before. This is just the township's annual road repaving program. Public Works Department provides the streets to be repaved and then we put the bid package together and put it out to bid. I included in your packet tonight, the base bid road locations as well as the alternate locations. So this year, we're looking at for the base bid roughly 2.3 miles of roadway. And then the total for all the alternate bids is 1.24 miles. So this just includes, you know, the mill and overlay of roads and various concrete improvements as well. So we're looking to probably award in March, depending on the bids. I'll coordinate the dates with the, with Micah, but tonight, you know, we'll get authorization. Well, we'll seek an authorization to advertise, so.
Okay, so we need a motion to author, authorization to advertise the 2021 Liquid Fuels Road Program. Do I have such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any questions of the engineer?
A quick question you said about doing awards in March. What, what's the process after that? Thinking of when construction would start and those, how long it takes.
So, yeah, so let's just say probably the second meeting in March might be an award based on, you know, where we are now. We have to execute the contracts, which typically might take two weeks. Submit that to PennDOT to get Liquid Fuels approval. That usually probably takes another week. Then we'll have our pre-construction meeting. So probably a month, three weeks to a month out after the award, construction will start. And then usually, you know, we put the roads on the township website as well so that people know about it.
Possibly late spring.
Mm-hmm. Yep. And then a few months worth of construction time, too.
And I'm happy to see that now Pill and Devonshire.
I knew you'd be happy about those ones.
I have a, a different question for Leanna, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Regarding the Brixmore land development, I know you submitted a punch list of items they'd have to complete, but construction is substantially complete, as you mentioned in your report. And I have heard many times from residents about traffic problems in that shopping center. And I think the developer can do more to calm the traffic in certain areas. But first, that must do the traffic study, I think it is supposed to do, required to do when construction is complete. And I'm trying to figure out, do we have a timeline for when that traffic study will be done? Who will do it, et cetera?
Right. Yep. So I've been in communication sort of with Brixmore. They are looking right now, construction is substantially complete. We did have a punch list and our punch list did identify that they have to complete this traffic study. They are looking to make some possible changes right now to the plan to improve the traffic in some of those areas. So it's still in a bit of flux at the moment in terms of their plan. But once they present, you know, a formal concept to us, we'll, we'll review it. And whether it becomes an amended plan that the board sees, we'll sort across that bridge based on the scope when we get it. They were hoping to make these improvements and then perform the traffic study, which I think makes sense. So we're probably looking at over maybe another month or two, based on what they're telling me for this study. So, you know, we'll keep on them about when they can do this, but that's, you know, that's the timeline that they've given me at this point.
I know they have some like speed humps or bumps or whatever you call them down by Harvest Grill, but I don't think I've seen any up near McCaffrey's and the pizza, the mole pizza, whatever it's called. I've been hearing people complaining that there's people zooming through that parking lot. It's not a matter, I guess, of traffic, but calming the traffic and pedestrian crossings, et cetera. So, you know, I'm not quite sure what other improvements they could do, but maybe that's on their list.
Right.
There is a, there is a hump in the driveway between McCaffrey's going into the next parking lot.
Right, right. But there are no pedestrians over there. They're in the parking lot. And I hear people complaining to me about people zooming in that parking lot where the mole pizzas, whatever it's called.
Mod pizza.
Odd pizza, odd pizza, whatever. But, you know.
Can I, if you have, can we just approve this motion? And then if you have any other questions, we'll go back to that. We have a motion in a second on the floor in regards to authorization, authorization to, to advertise the 2021 Liquid Fuels Program. If there's no further questions from the board, I'll just ask if there's any questions from the public in regards to our Fuels Road Program. I'm, I'm sure there may be a lot of questions in regards to that, but seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is five zero. Mr. Mack, did you want to ask any more questions in regards to Brixmore?
No, that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, I guess that's it for the engineers report tonight.
Yep, thank you.
Onto the solicitors report. Mr. Sander.
No report this evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Managers report. Mr. Lewis. You're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, took me a minute to find. General fund balances of this evening is $2,561,951. Plan expirations before the board with no action required. And we have Chief Hearn for his monthly police report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies. January 2021 Police Report, we documented 1,536 calls for service. We logged just over 25,000 miles of patrol. We had 18 arrests for the month of January, 11 DUI, five narcotics. Four of those narcotics had outstanding warrants from outside jurisdictions. We had one fraud and reported carjacking of the tri-axle dump truck I spoke about last month. There were 10 new cases referred to detectives, seven crime scenes processed. Nothing significant. There was one safe to say investigation involving the Newtown Middle School. Precautionary measures were put into place. That mail was quickly identified regarding that information and it, referrals, proper referrals were made for that juvenile. Were 52 traffic crashes, one injury, 14 non-injury, 13 property damage, five hit and runs, and 18 deer-related collisions. There were 220 traffic citations issued with 151 warnings issued. Selective enforcement. We had three truck enforcement details, two with the task force, one was Newtown only, resulting in 27 inspections, four citations, 15 warnings, and three drivers replaced out of service. As Joe Chivoni mentioned earlier, we had that snow emergency, January 31 to February 2. There were no police department issues regarding that snow emergency. Our frauds are continuing. Reminder to the public, do not give your personal information out over the phone to anyone. If somebody contacts you and tells you to go buy gift card at Acme or CVS or whatever store, do not do so. Most organizations, all organizations that I'm aware of, do not ask you to pay your bills through that venue. So please do not do that. Our major incident response team members are assisting the county in the vaccination sites throughout the county. That is being reimbursed as well. And our official national drug takeback day is April 24. So mark your calendar. If you have old prescriptions, please drop them off at that time and date. Thank you. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board?
I have a couple. I noticed that the traffic citations increased by 395% from December to January, but I think that's because you didn't watch your offices exposed with the COVID-19. So you cut down on that in December. I guess you're getting back up to speed. But my question is, are all the officers, have they been vaccinated yet?
All officers who desired a vaccination were provided an opportunity. Most of them have accepted that opportunity and have received their first shot. They're still waiting for the second shot.
Okay, that's good to know. So I think all first responders should be vaccinated as well as teachers. But regarding the traffic stops, I, I think I noted to you before that the state police have been, began now collecting data during all traffic stops at the beginning of the year as part of a program to identify any racial or ethnic disparities and recommend remedies if they do exist. I asked you previously about this, but I think you said that you're not collecting such data unless it's required by state law. But are you willing to reconsider your policy, given that the Pennsylvania State Police are now collecting such data? I assume that every stop, offices have access to the license and registration, which would include such data.
Well, John, that is correct. At the time that you asked me that, the state police did not or did not collect that data. It wasn't required by the state. The state just implemented that in January. As a result of your inquiry and as well as to ensure our department is fair and equal policing across the board, back in June, I did my own survey. Since Jan, since July of 2020 through December of 20, ended December of 2020, we did an analysis in their department wise to determine our stops of our, our vehicles. So I didn't need to take the lead from the state police for their January implementation. I started it before that point. And my records indicate that from July 2020 till the end of December 2020, our, our traffic tickets were 92% white, 4% black, and 4% others. Our yearly traffic warnings were 85% white, 9% black, and 6% others. There was no racial disparity. Everything seemed in line with what our, our demographics and our traveling public has. I did that to protect our organization and to represent to the public that we do not racially profile on our car stops. We enforce the motor vehicle code accordingly, based on the, the vehicle stops. You got to watch the data that you start collecting. If you start collecting data, it tells you all different things. You can tell you anything you wanted to tell you. And most of our stops are in the evening. You don't even see who's driving them cars until you actually stop the person, get their license and information. So that, that's my perspective on our department. I commend our officers for, for doing fair and impartial policing in this township. Thank you.
Well, thanks for that information because with regard to hiring and offices of, you know, from diverse backgrounds. You know, my point was that you're, it's not necessarily, our community involves people who are traveling through our community. And that those are the people that mostly that you're stopping on these major highways like the bypass and Swamp Road. And I'm assuming that a lot, I mean, assuming, you know, that makes me, but I'm assuming that most of us travelers are not necessarily residents of Newtown. So your scope of operations, you know, sounds like it's more like 8% non-white, let's say, rather than the 2 or 4% that is representing in, in the residents of Newtown. So that's good to know. Thank you for that data. I appreciate it.
Any further questions for the chief? Thank you, Chief. Thanks for your report.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Chairman, I have three other items under my report this evening, all of which are related to capital purchases that were outlined in the 2021 budget. The first of which is, is for the two police vehicles for this year. Both vehicles will be purchased from Chapman Ford and emergency upfitting through Co-Stars, the purchasing consortium, along with the vehicle, in a combined amount of $107,457. If you recall back in the, in the 2021 budget, we had set aside approximately $114,000 under the capital plan to purchase these vehicles. We expect that any additional purchases on these vehicles, including, you know, the, the decals and the, the paint on the cars will bring the price of the total purchase of vehicle up to about that 114 number. But as for right now, the major purchase itself would require board action. So the appropriate motion would be consider, the consideration to purchase two police vehicles from Chapman Ford and emergency upfitting through Co-Stars in the combined amount of $107,457.
Do I have such a motion?
Moved.
Have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any questions from the board? And I guess, have we used Chapman Ford in the past or is, we have?
Yeah, last year we used them.
Okay, and they give us the best deal or apparently through the consortium or?
Yes, and, and their purchases are all through Co-Stars, the Purchasing Alliance in Pennsylvania. So yes, they, their prices were, were better than the other vendors in our area.
Okay. Well, because I know we have a Ford dealership right here in Newtown, I guess, were they just out of the ballpark in regards to this or?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public on this purchase? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any pose?
No.
Okay, passes for one.
Next item under my report, Mr. Chairman, is the purchase of a Public Works vehicle. This vehicle, we had set aside an estimated $75,000 under the cap, capital plan. It's an F350 Ford, utility truck that would be used for routine daily maintenance, also snow removal and maintenance of our parks. The appropriate motion would be, motion to approve the purchase of a 2021 Ford F350 from Chapman Ford through Co-Stars and upfitting through Mid-Atlantic Municipal LLC through Co-Stars in the combined amount of $64,661.
Do I have such a motion?
I'll make that move.
Have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any questions from the board on this motion?
Yeah, I did. I think somewhere I read that this would be useful in snow, snow events. Is this going to be outfitted with a plow and does the plow include, is the plow included in the Mid-Atlantic Municipal outfit?
Yes, it will be. And yes, it's included.
Great, thanks.
And any further questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any posed? This is five zero.
Final, final item under my agenda, Mr. Chairman, is the purchase of two lawn mowers, commercial lawn mowers from Star Lawn Mower. These will be used in our parks to maintain the ball fields. The total price combined is $15,000. The total price combined is fifteen thousand one hundred and twenty eight dollars. Uh, we had set aside seventeen thousand dollars under the capital plan for this year. So the appropriate motion would be motion to purchase two mowers from Star, Star Lawn Mower Incorporated through Sourcewell in a combined amount of fifteen thousand one hundred and twenty eight dollars.
Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second, no motion in a second. Any questions from the board? From the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any pose?
No.
Okay, this is four one. Anything else, Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I really quick wanted to mention that we, uh, the board met an executive session on the fourth of February, uh, to discuss matters of pending litigation. And I just wanted to bring up real quick, uh, with the liquid fuels bids, the way that we had broken out those bids, we're using approximately five hundred and thirty thousand dollars of liquid fuels money, which is uh, money that's paid to the township by the state as part of the liquid fuels tax. Uh, we're allocating a hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to the base bid. Uh, and the remaining two hundred thousand dollars that we had in the budget for, of general fund money will be allocated towards the alternate bids in that bid package. So in the, in the event that we need to pull back again, we will not need to rebid the entire package. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, minutes, bills list, and reports. Mr. Mack?
Thank you. Um, I moved that we approved the minutes of the January twenty seven, twenty twenty one. What a supervisors meeting.
Uh, motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second, any questions from the board? From the public? Uh, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those, this is five zero.
Okay, I moved that we approve the payment of our bills according to the bills list dated February ten, twenty twenty one, totaling two hundred and eighty three thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty five cents.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, no motion in a second. Any question from the board on the bills list? From the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Passes five zero.
Finally, I move that we uh, make into fund transfers totaling two hundred and twenty two thousand one hundred and ninety two dollars and thirty seven cents as per the bills list dated February ten, twenty twenty one.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any uh, questions from the board? From the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those, passes five zero. Is that it, Mr. Mack? Thank you, sir. Uh, move on to our second session of public comment. Anyone who wants to make comment on any topic? Uh, please raise their hand and I will call on you. Uh, Mr. D. April, you're up. John, you're muted.
Hello.
There you go, there you go.
Hey, Phil, I'm gonna uh, agree with you on the, uh, the school board. Uh, we let-
All right, let's, let's, uh, let's adjourn right now if John is agreeing with me.
All right. Pretty close to a first.
But uh, uh, with the school board elections, uh, you know, it's very important and people don't pay too much attention to it. Um, most of the uh, people that run for school board are usually uh, you know, parents of children in the system or uh, school teachers themselves. We had many school teachers on there, uh, although they were Philadelphia school teachers, they were still teaching and on Council Rock School Board because where they live. Um, you know, it means a lot. Um, you know, uh, I had said I wanted to run one time and they told me, nah, nah, you don't want to go on there. Northampton rules the school board. Uh, which is true. They have the most people on there. We have two. Um, depending on where you live in Newtown. Uh, I mean, uh, our guy who lives in Newtown Grant, you know, uh, uh, he's, he got off now because I think he retired on his job also. He was an attorney. Um, he told me one time, oh, I only voted once for a raise. I says, no, you're wrong. It's three or four times, not just once. You know, evidently he thought he only voted for a raise once. Of course, his kids were in, in the system then. Uh, you know, then we had another guy. He was a retired school teacher. Um, you know, and he said, oh, I'm gonna get on there. He ran, I'm gonna get on there and I'm going to uh, uh, straighten that school board out. Yeah, he got on there and he voted yes for all the, the uh, the tax uh, raising for the school board anyway. Um, you know, it's very important. People don't pay attention to it and they have to. You know, you know, I get up nearly every uh, uh, time it's for voting, the primaries or the regular election. And I tell people, hey, get out there and vote, no matter who you vote for. But uh, you know, I'm gonna say, do your homework before you vote and get out there and vote. Because you don't want anybody with the uh, uh, kids in the school system, they're gonna vote. They're gonna vote because it's, there's, hey, you're gonna give extra stuff for their kids, you know, and uh, you know, then that's, that's the way it goes. It's uh, human nature. Um, another thing I want to bring up is uh, I know it don't pertain to the board, but he mentions the board all the time. It's uh, you know, the guy with all the social media stuff. Uh, he has a uh, Meet Mack Monday thing. Now, I don't know who went the other day who, uh, you know, Zoom meeting now. He used to have them in person. Um, you know, I, I tried to register. He didn't put me on naturally because he knows, you know, I'm gonna be against uh, most of the stuff that he's for. And uh, you know, the thing is, why have them if you're not gonna la, allow somebody on there that might give you an opposition? Why have them? You use that stuff. You bring it to the board all the time. Oh, this person said and that person said. And I, I mean, one of their, one of his meetings, I heard only one person showed up anyway. But uh, hey, if you're gonna do that, Johnny Mack, take my picture off. Take my picture off. You've got that Meet Mack uh, Monday thing and my picture's on there from when they did attend when you had them in person. Get my picture off there. Uh, you know, a lot of the people that go there, uh, not even from the township. Uh, from the borough, from uh, Middletown across the street, the, you know, uh, like the time I, time I did go, there were four people there. That's it, four people. And he makes it like it's a big thing, you know? Don't put anything about supervisors on there if it's your personal meeting. That's all I could say. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, John. Uh, anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing none. Uh, move on to old businesses. Anyone have any old business to discuss?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, untable the motion for the township to help fund Eagle Ridge Arcadia litigation.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion again is, is which?
Uh, well, we're untabling.
Go untable it, okay. So I have a motion to untable and a second. Uh, any questions from the board on this? Now, in regards to this motion, Mr. Sander and I is to untable, they nay is to keep it on the table. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from the public on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of untabling?
Aye.
Aye. Hold on, hold on. Yeah, Mr. Shoner.
Unmute yourself.
Okay. Uh, just, uh, just wanna just clarify, uh, when you say you're un, untabling it, that's for the next meeting?
No, that means it can be discussed at this time.
If it's on- At this time. Okay, that's, this is one of the reasons I called in because I was uh, uh, Dave, you had contacted Steve Harrison, said that the final discussion would be held on the twenty fourth?
That's correct.
Okay, I don't know what we're untabling and this-
That's where the settlement, isn't it? That's where the settlement.
Correct. This is a motion that was made two meetings ago that was tabled at the time. The motion was to uh, that the township contribute uh, financially to Eagle Ridge's defense, uh, legal defense uh, fund, I believe. Um, paraphrasing the motion, it was placed on the table. This motion right now is to remove that motion from the table and consider it if the board wishes.
I understand now. Thank you.
Okay. So I have a motion in a second. Any further questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the questions. All those in favor of untabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Continue to table?
Aye.
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 Okay, so it's uh, still on the table apparently. Uh, any other old business to be discussed? Okay, new business, we have appointments to boards and commissions. I will uh, toss this over to Mr. Fisher. Because I think he's keeper of all the uh, information there. And make, uh, you can make the motions and provided everyone, has everyone looked at the applicants for the different now, Mr. Mack?
No, I didn't realize we were gonna be doing that. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Uh, anyone, I mean, we could put this off to the next meeting. I mean, it's not like we're in a rush. It maybe that'll give us a chance to have other applicants. Uh, uh, Mr. Fisher, why don't you-
I, I was-
Tell people who, who were looking for him, what the, what committees and commissions.
All right. Um, we are good for most of our, uh, many of our commissions are in pretty good shape. Uh, Joint Historical Commission, we have one vacancy. Uh, for the Harb, we have one vacancy. They meet on Wednesday mornings. I'm not sure when Joint Historical Commission meets. Um, we're okay. Uh, the envi, the envi, environmental advisory council has one vacancy, but they also, they have one person who's interested in that vacant, vacancy. So there's a Mrs., Mrs. Wal, Walsh who's interested in that position. The Technology Commission, we have a seven-member commission. We have one person who's on it and two people who are interested. So that would be uh, four positions for the technology position. Technology and communications. We added communications this time around. You know, Finance Committee has one vacancy. I actually have a friend who's interested in that vacancy, but I can't convince that person to get their resume in on time. Um, but there's, so there is one vacancy in the Finance Committee. Kyle, you can correct me if I'm wrong about this. Veterans Committee has three vacancies but have two people who are interested. Uh, we got letters of interest from a Mr. Stormer and a Mr. McCann, Kent, Mr. McCann. That brings us to the Economic Development Committee. We had, uh, that's a nine-member committee. There are six members currently. We got a letter of interest from a Mrs. Gladani. Uh, so uh, that would bring us up to seven. So we still have two vacancies on the Economic Development Committee. And lastly, but not leastly, we had um, a letter of interest for a vacancy board. Uh, that's just a one person. Uh, they, they, the vacancy board chair uh, chair would uh, come into play if there was, if we needed a fellow supervisor's position. And uh, we had a, a two-two deadlock. Uh, we'd bring the vacancy board chair to break that, break that tie. Uh, and we have Mary Donaldson submitted a, a letter of interest for that. So that's where we stand.
Okay, if uh, anyone out there is interested in any board or commission that the Dennis said, mentioned, or maybe any, any uh, commission that you would like to be involved in, please send in your uh, either letter of intent or a resume and um, next meeting, we will uh, vote on these vacancies. I just want to say that on some of the committees that are nine or seven or whatever, they can still function uh, with five. Uh, so if we have at least five on, on committees, they could still uh, do their duties and function as committees. So I, I know that the, you said the Economic Development Committee has nine, has how many? Seven?
There's nine. It's a nine-member committee.
Okay, but I think if, I think if they have seven, we're still, they're still okay to function, so.
To be consistent, uh, I did not mention that we had letters of interest uh, for the, for the Technology and Communications Committee. I should be consistent with my approach here. It's uh, again, a seven-member commission. We have one person who's on it. We had two letters of interest from uh, um, Madison McCurdy and uh, Mr. Lickman.
And board members, if you just look into, I, I believe there's a file that is uh, uh, late uh, applica, applicants for boards, it's, or in some, some regards like that. So take a look at that, uh, that folder and there'll be these resumes in there for you to take a look at. Um, any other new business to be discussed? I, I just have one comment. Uh, I guess it's not new business or old business, but a, a, as you know, we've been doing these Zoom meetings and we're getting a lot of um, a lot of response and, and input from residents. And I just say, there's, there's a lot of work that goes into putting these meetings together, and I'd like to commend um, the people in our administration and uh, that put it together, particularly Olivia, that does a lot of hard work getting this all organized. And uh, in some cases, she's your contact person. So I, I think uh, sometimes we forget what goes into doing these Zoom meetings, but I'd just like to uh, to thank her and thank whoever else. Uh, maybe, I don't know all the names of the people involved, but I'd just like to, to send a blanket thank you to everyone that uh, puts these Zoom meetings together. I think we all appreciate it. And the residents uh, um, hopefully appreciate it because they get a chance to come on here and I, I think it's very important to get their input. So uh, thank you, Olivia, and thank everyone else that, that helps you. Of course, I don't want to leave Mr. Lewis out because uh, I don't want him to, to get mad at me, but uh, they're all, they're all part of this, so. It is appreciated.
I, I would like to second that, and I think uh, the improvement has been in, in terms of getting residents to participate in the meetings has greatly improved since we're doing Zoom and uh, you know, I know that I've been talking to some people, uh, PSATs that, you know, uh, we should uh, be able to do Zoom meetings as, as a regular way of, of doing business to be able to get more residents involved in these meetings because sometimes it's difficult to get out in the evening and go to a live meeting. And I know I don't like dressing up and uh, wearing a tie and stuff like that to go sit behind a dais. So uh, I'm perfectly happy to do Zoom meetings forever.
Yeah, the only downside, let me just check here. I don't think anyone left a bowl of candy up here.
Absolutely. And John, we, it's a good point about uh, not getting dressed up. I don't think we know if any of us are wearing pants tonight, but that's another story. And um, yeah, I mean, i- if, if you recall, I guess it was a few meetings ago, we had maybe, oh man, ninety people. Ninety people on here. And I don't know if we could fit ninety people comfortably in the uh, in our room there. Uh, with COVID going on now, we're limited. So this is a good venue. I, I, I think it's a, a great thing. Uh, and uh, I hate to say, but, but it is probably the wave of the future. It is the future. So uh, again, I commend everybody that puts the hard work into putting these together. Um, Mr. Sander, any uh, any reason for an executive session tonight?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, no reason.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Can I make, um, I know there's some, I, I believe, um, forecasted for some snow, maybe tonight and probably some uh, for the rest of the weekend perhaps. Um, but uh, I ask everyone to just be patient with the uh, all, all the contractors and uh, township uh, public works that are plowing the streets and I mean, I get to your neighborhood as, as quickly. Um, you know, they may plow you perhaps. But um, I wish that uh, we all be patient with them because they work very hard and um, you know, it, it's tough and we, we want to make sure that we're supporting the people that work for us. So um, let's keep that in mind uh, throughout this rest of the winter season and into the spring. Um, I know everybody wants everything done right away, but um, sometimes things um, take a little time. So let's just be mindful of that. Um, and I look forward to uh, seeing you all um, next time. Thank you. And I look forward to seeing you all next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Especially since it's been heavy snow years.
The snow month, we, yeah, we, we've been lucky up until February, so let's, let's hope we get through February relatively unscathed, but okay, if there's nothing else, I'll take a, a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Okay, without objection, we're adjourned for the evening. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for coming, coming out.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Thanks.